Evening, everyone. And welcome to our January 23rd council meeting. Additions to the agenda. 13.1 is meeting with Minister Nixon and Emily Williams.
13.1 or 13.10?
13.10, sorry. For Tuesday, February 7th, 5 o'clock. That's a council meeting just earlier than... 13.11, try council meeting, February 18th. Oh, sorry, February 8th. Can't read my own reading. Is there any other additions?
Madam Mayor, the administration has no more additions to the agenda, but we did receive information from Little Red River Cree Nation in regards to their housing initiative. Because of the contents of that or where the discussion might go, the administration is suggesting the council to move that into camera.
Okay. So 18...
Two.
18.2, Little Red. Any others?
No.
Okay, should I have someone move those with the amendments, please? Counselor Lebrun, all in favor? Carry. Approval of the minutes from January 9th. If there's no errors. Deputy Mayor moves. All in favor? Carry. Down to my report. Which is kind of short. So we had our CRAA meeting, which is the Community Rail Alliance. On the executive are Terry Ungarian, myself, Kimberly Worthington, Jackie Clayton from Grand Prairie, and Tom Steves from the Alberta Wheat and Barley Board. And then the member communities, there's 20 of them. The Community Rail Advocacy plans to lobby the federal government and the provincial government in hopes of improving what we feel is inconsistent access to the railcars in northern Alberta. On January 10th, we had an airport task force meeting. We met to look at the upgrades at the airport. The floor is done with a couple of deficiencies. Counters have been installed. The wall is painted and touched up. Baseboard's been repainted. And the counter height is being readjusted on one of the... What do you call it? Airport side or runway side? And the next items will be lighting and furniture. You should have got there. It actually is very nice, very bright. Looks pretty springed up. We do, we have had a couple CRA meetings since January 10th. They are confidential. I will tell you in camera. I had a meeting with Atco, Cole Crook, who is the Vice President of Indigenous Relationships. We met to discuss additional funding donation for the Friendship Heart History Walk. And that's my report. Any questions? Can I have someone move it, please? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. Deputy Mayor, your report, please.
January 17th, attended the Upper Head Forest Public Advisory Committee. Very interesting presentation from the Outfitters Association of Alberta. Then on January 18th, attended the Red Eagle Forest.
Which I was absent from?
Yes.
Because I was sick.
Almost everyone attended by Zoom, so the next meeting in February is by Zoom.
Okay. What was the outfitters' presentation about?
Just, they regulate all of the outfitters in Alberta. One of the things that was suspended during the pandemic was that all of the allocations to outfitters are for use by non-resident, non-resident Albertans. And for the first time ever during the pandemic, so that they had clientele, they could sell those allocations and guide for Albertans, but that's no more. So there's maybe a move a foot to change that. However, certainly the rationale behind that is to promote tourism and bring in money from outside the province. Anyway, it was quite interesting.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Anderson.
Counselor Anderson has nothing to report on.
Thank you. Counselor Jessamyn.
January 10th, airport beautification. And I voiced the mayor's enthusiasm as well. The airport looks really, really nice. Lots of hard work. It's really bright there. Come a long ways. And on the 16th, Toko donation presentation.
Which we thank him again for. Counselor Lambert.
On January 12th and 19th, I attended the two sessions of uni 101 with Counsel Lebrun virtually. And also on January 16th, attended the Toko donation presentation.
Probably your uni course.
Well, it's interesting.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot to fill in in two hours a day, but it's good.
Yeah, good. Counselor Lebrun.
Well, just like Josh said, I've been attending the uni 101 courses there on January 12th and 19th. And that's all I have to report.
Counselor Welke.
Madam Mayor, I have no meetings to report.
Thank you, counselors. Could I have someone move your reports? Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carry. Counsel's action list. So I just have a question on the water service agreement. Now that we're headed in a different direction with the wastewater, will we be getting that agreement signed?
And I met with Mr. Asils on Friday. And that agreement has been essentially agreed to by both administrations. So once we get his counsel to proceed with it, we'll, well, actually, we'll bring it back for the next meeting just for finalization because there is no ties now to wastewater. Also tied to that is our fire services agreement. So Jordan and I had a discussion about the nature of that. And we're actually looking at, rather than a five-year, we're looking at longer term on that. So we're just working it out. Mr. Asils contacted me today and said that they want to do their testing, pressure testing on their system at the end of the month. So they're just about ready to use the system, which they realize they can't do until we have science evidence. So we're really, really close.
Okay. To that, have you discussed with him starting our SETI meetings again?
Yeah, he's meeting with his counsel this week. I'll just touch base with him tomorrow before it was in the council.
And maybe, maybe with the suggestion that we meet quarterly instead of monthly? Because things don't move that fast in our world?
Not at all, almost never.
Thank you. What is happening with, have we been talking or keeping Alberta transportation informed of our Water for Life application?
So, Madam Mayor, I've spoken with Director Straub. We're just waiting on some votes for an engineer. We want to bring that back to council to make a decision where we proceed with our wastewater system. And then that will probably dictate how we approach Alberta transportation.
Okay.
But I think we're hoping to have that carried away.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions. Is there any other questions from the reports from the rest of council? If not, can I have a motion to move, please?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Jessamyn, I forgot your name. Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carry. The events listing. I had a question. I don't know if you can answer it for me. How is the volleyball night going? Is it being used or?
Yes, I actually attended the one night myself. And it was fully subscribed. You actually have to, you're gonna have to move and use the net sideways because there was enough for teens.
Wow, excellent.
It was excellent, wide, age range, like people from different... Part of this was a partnership, as I think you thought. And there was a group from there. There was young kids, older, old people. But yeah, it went really, went really, really well.
Okay, good. Is there any other questions about the events? Can I get someone to move that, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. The project status list. Any questions? I just, I don't, I guess I don't have a question. But, well, I guess it's a question. About the multi-use facility. And what, what are we going to do if we don't get the funding this year? Like, should we start looking at Plan B now? Because I'm worried about the arena. What, it's got two more years, three more years?
Madam Mayor, I'll pass it on to Director. Because you, there's sort of two questions.
Yeah, I know.
So we're currently working on applying for the GICB grant that'll come to council on the February...
For which one, pardon me?
That's, that's the, for the Zero Carbon.
Oh, okay, okay.
For the 25 to 50 million. So we're working on reworking the design to make sure we meet all the specifications on our energy. So we're on, we're on track with that. And we'll come back to council with the, what we're looking at for the changes and if there's any cost differences. In the interim, we have asked the same architecture firms, the already that we've been using, if they would give us a totally different design, which is a core plan to look at, just like the bare minimum. So to come back for the cost estimate to give us that. Not a detailed design, not going like the 78,000 detail design, just to come back. So we're gonna get the, February 28th is when that big grant is due. So once that's off the plates, then we'll come back and we'll start looking at an alternative.
Okay.
We'll bring that back to council, just basic floor plans. And like you said, just high level costing.
Okay.
So it would be in the same area, but we'd be looking possibly just like Fieldhouse Arena, the front and the top part, that sort of thing. So we'll come back with a couple of different options.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Madam Mayor, you also asked about the condition of the arena.
Well, we, we're gonna have the, an engineer come in the summertime, after spring, then get a better look. And the same engineer that did the original, the structure at the foundation, they're gonna come back and they give us a reasonable quote. That'll be part of the capital plan for them to come back.
Okay, thank you. Well, if it's healed, it still has problems with the ice that hasn't healed. All right, Janie, can I have someone move that? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. So the North Service Water Supply Agreement?
Madam Mayor, this was discussed at the committee of whole, but just to very quickly go back over the, what administration is suggesting. During the negotiations with McKenzie County, discussion centered on having a franchise agreement for the individual water sales that the town provides in McKenzie County. And those would be ones along the Footner Lake Waterline or the North Waterline. There's approximately a little less than two dozen connections there. The county has suggested that we look at a franchise agreement on that. The original agreement was drafted as a franchise agreement, which both municipalities entered into on the 27th of July of this, of last year. In our submission to the Alberta Utility Commission, the Alberta Utility Commission has actually asked the municipalities why they are proceeding with a franchise agreement rather than a direct water service sales agreement. So we came back from our meeting with the AUC, discussed this with McKenzie County Administration, and have decided to simplify the entire process and just enter into a service agreement for the sale of water. Again, a lot of the times, the franchise agreement is protection from any competition. It was our guess that the town council, if they wanted to put their own water service in there, was not going to bother the town council if they wanted to service their own residents. We still need that water line for our new city airport and for other oil fairs. So anyway, administration is suggesting, is recommending that we enter into a termination agreement on the water franchise. And that we enter into McKenzie County a separate North Service Water Supply Agreement.
And they are going to rescind their...
They're meeting, they're meeting this week as well.
I didn't.
Counselor Welke.
So just for clarity on the differences between a franchise and a water services agreement, you had mentioned that the, it basically protected us from competition. But I noticed too, like the AUC, did they recommend that also? Because normally the, like a franchise would be if a private provider was providing that utility versus a municipal provider?
It can be. There are municipalities who own larger utility companies that would fall under franchise.
Fall under franchise.
But in this case, there is no protection. The town doesn't need protection from competition because the water line isn't created to service those residents. That is ancillary to the water line. And as long as the company is protected by a cancellation clause that's substantial enough that we're not leaving them without those services, they're quite happy with the district. The other thing the AUC would do is we would have to submit any rate changes that we wanted to the Alberta Utility Commission.
If it was a franchise.
If it was a franchise, okay.
So what was the purpose of them wanting us to enter into a franchise?
It may have, unfortunately, that reasoning may have left with the previous administration. But it would have maybe given a little more protection if it was a franchise governed by the AUC. It might have been more difficult to plead the agreement. We've just put a substantial termination clause in the agreement, and they're happy with that.
Okay.
But we're protected all the same in terms of the, like I, right in there, I guess, our, our lines and equipment or the use of them? Would we have the same protections that we would under the franchise agreement?
We, mainly because we're related to the water system, up to the bolt, where the connection into the home. And we also have, I must say, aren't any connection into the property. The only caveat on that is that we will ensure that there's a proper development permit from McKenzie County before we provide a disservice. But everything's all by the town.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move that, recommended, don't you?
All in favor? Carry. Okay, 12 to the organizational policy update.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So we've taken, as a discussion we had with council at the committee of whole last week, we took the policy back through administration and made the following changes, as you see in the report. So we further clarified the paid-on-call definition as requested by council. Laid out that it actually is a fire service industry term. And that, and then we defined it as an employee who's filling a casual position with the fire department whose primary duties include training and receiving callouts for an hourly rate of pay based on as available basis. We further clarified it later in the policy on how they are paid. This, this clarification was actually provided to aspire our legal counsel. And following discussions at the committee of whole last week and the questions you had about our potential junior firefighter program, and we had an excellent meeting with the Hiddlewood Public School on Thursday with regards to that program, we thought we better add that into the policy. So we made another change or another addition into the policy defining what the junior firefighter program is. We don't want to have the junior firefighters and students, our intention is not to have them in that paid-on-call program because they're just there for educational purposes, not responding to calls. So we want to clarify that we're not paying them to attend training. They will, as a side note for, for council, our meeting with Hiddlewood Public School, they will, we have determined the high school credit they're gonna get for the program. We're just kind of hammering out a couple of the final details, and we're actually getting ready to present to the students in early February. So, so that program actually went, is going headway smoother and faster than we thought it would. So the staff at Hiddlewood Public are pretty excited about it. So finally, the last thing we changed was the question with regards to having the volunteer fire department association in the policy. We checked on that, and it really doesn't make a difference because the administration and finance knows where the check is going. So we changed it from grant to grant for volunteer service for, to grant for community service as the fire department takes part in many community events in town, and that will still continue to be on a volunteer basis. So, so we changed it to a grant for community service and the town provided the Hiddlewood Fire Department Association a yearly grant based on available budget as determined by council. So those are the changes we made to the policy. And open to any questions from council.
So that volunteer budget, was that putting to the interim budget?
It sure was, yeah.
Okay, I didn't read that line. How much was it?
Sorry, which, which one?
The volunteer part of it.
Oh, the grant?
Yeah.
It's $3,000 a quarter, so it's down. We had, the original was just over $48,000. We dropped it to $12,000.
And I just had a couple of, the $3,000, did we run that one down the rabbit hole? Where they were able to deduct tax-free?
Yes, so there's, there's actually two tax deductions in the CRA. So the $3,000 tax credit, which is really $3,000 on wages, which results in about $400, $500 or something to that effect, does change because now your firefighters, as they're being paid, they're allowed a $1,000 tax credit. So basically, the first $1,000 of the wages that they would get from their service with the fire department would be tax-free. So it's kind of changed. So they get a little bit less tax credit, but they're also receiving more take-home pay. So it, it kind of, it balances out.
So the $3,000 goes away?
$3,000 goes away, gets replaced by the $1,000 tax credit for the, for the firefighters. So it's still based on, they still leave a letter saying that they've been a member of the fire service and all that kind of stuff. So.
So, and my other question was, and I noticed the lineup, I think it's $157,000 we budgeted for on call? Something like that?
Yeah, we're, like, yeah, that's including the student, two student positions. So it's $120,000. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think it's $120,000 for the wages and then an additional 37 for the four student position.
So is that to be enough? Like, I'm looking at, like, they're training, what do you train, three hours a week?
Yep, so.
52 weeks a year?
50 weeks a year, yeah.
50, so that's, that's like about $55,000, right? For 10 firefighters?
Yeah, so, so there's a number of things. We, like, I think we, we didn't, I don't know if we brought, the numbers were in the committee of whole report from, we ran those numbers based on $25 an hour. We've been tracking, like, the number of hours firefighters have put in for, for a number of years since we've been on the, on a system that we can do that. So we had a rate in there based on the $25 an hour standard rate that we had for, you know, when we paid our firefighters at deployments or long calls or that kind of stuff. We just had a volunteer rate in there. And the total hours has ranged from, in a high year, we didn't include the 2019 because of chugging. But in a high year, which was 2021, which was the same year we had that multi-day North Ward Fire, it was like $133,000 in wages. That also included time managed by, like, our, some of our full-time staffing costs were, were muddied into there. So this year, we will, we will only pay it out roughly around $70,000, or sorry, in 2022. So we feel like that $120,000, especially for this year because we're already starting late in the year, will definitely be enough. And then we'll re-gauge it for budget time to see how we're sitting. A lot of that is gonna depend on, you know, if we have a really busy training year where we're running, like, the cost would be dictated more by training than it will by calls. Because training is where we ramp up most of our costs. So if we run, you know, four weekend training sessions that are entire weekends, sometimes we run two, three-day sessions, and we have a turnout of, you know, 30 firefighters, if we have 30 firefighters, then that cost is quite a bit higher, right? So right now, we only have 16, or 17, sorry. And so obviously, the cost is a little bit less. So, so we feel our calculations are really close.
I, I just ran some, some, and I, I mean, I'm not a math major or anything, but I was just looking at 16 firefighters, 50 weeks a year, like, you're looking at $70,000 for just training. And then your call out at 20, just $22 an hour and with four firefighters is gonna run, like, if they each did an hour, and it would go up, you know, $45,000 for one hour because if they show up, right? And $90,000 for two. And I only went as far as three and went past the budget.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, like, I'm just wondering if we ramp up this fire department, get more people, are we gonna have enough money in the budget?
I, I feel we will for this year. I, as I said, just judging by the numbers that our system is running, like, a standard payroll accounting every year. And according to the numbers that we looked at through our rich reporting system, we should, we should be right in the ballpark of where we should be. Again, we don't have, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball. If we have a couple of big fires or we have a couple of big events that were multiple days, then that's...
And I based that on 512, 512 columns.
Right, yeah.
So half of those were done during the day, then?
Yeah, then, yeah. And a lot of those aren't gonna be, you know, we don't have volunteer turnout during the day or, you know, paid-on-call member turnout during the day. So, you know, a large portion of those calls are just managed by the, the staff that are already in the station day-to-day, and, and they won't, they won't see any additional costing. One of the other things I should mention too in terms of our full-time staff, so we will be managing a lot of their overtime. Like, if they come to a call at nighttime, we manage a lot of their time by flexing. So if they're up for, you know, an hour at night, we just bring them an hour later in during the day. So we're not paying out that, that OTP. So we already had those conversations with our staff, and we already do it on a kind of ad hoc basis as it is now. So it's not really gonna change anything.
So will you limit the number of firefighters that you take in now? Because if you get up to 40, again, there's no way we can afford this.
Man, if we got up to 40, I'd probably be doing a happy dance.
Or 30 even.
Even 30, but I, I don't see us getting that high that quickly. But those, those big numbers at like $133,000 in 2021 or in, in 2020 was $122, where I might have those two firsts. We were well over 30 firefighters with those numbers at $25 an hour. So the vast majority of our firefighters, if you look at our wage scale, I think that was presented to council showing the qualifications. Well, most of them are coming in at that 19 level when they first start, and then they have to build their qualifications, which takes some period of time, right? So a lot of those newer firefighters coming in, unless they come from another fire department, will already have, that may already have some qualifications. They'll be in that $19 to $20 an hour range for the first year or two before they actually build their qualifications enough to get those next...
Yeah, I based mine on $22 an hour.
Yeah, so one of the newer firefighters are gonna be 19 or 20, depending on...
So, but they're gonna get paid for training, that's what scares me.
Yes, yeah.
Like, if 30 of them show up for training at $22 an hour.
It ramps up quickly, yeah. No way I understand that.
All right, any other questions?
I just have a question, Madam Mayor, too. So, so then on the, I mean, because it's, like you said, you don't have crystal ball. So call responses, then, what is the protocol? call responses then, what is the protocol? If, if this is in place and, you know, all 16 of them show up for a call, how do you mitigate that? Do, is it, do you, do you kind of determine the need of that call and say, we only need three? And, and the firefighters are clear that if they show up, they might get a stand down and then they don't get paid?
That's correct. Yeah. Well, it's not that they don't get paid. So if they show up to the station, they will get paid that minimum.
So if all 16 of them showed up, but only three had to go out, all 16 would get paid for an hour?
For an hour, yeah, for the minimum we were required to pay them. So.
Is it an hour? Is it one hour?
It's three hours based on the minimum wage available, which is actually $45 an hour depending on, or $45 because it's 15, the minimum available wage would be minimum wage. So.
So is there a way to communicate to the members that we have enough?
Well, we have, so yeah, I understand what you're asking. So we have, we actually have like a system called I am Responding where we can actually see who's coming into the station, who dials in, who's available. We can track all that. And when we do a stand down, we can actually like have dispatch page out a stand down to other members if we have that. I don't anticipate, quite honestly, that being a problem. You know, where we're going to have large turnouts is that, you know, 5 o'clock in the afternoon to 10 o'clock at night kind of window where most of our paid on call members would be available and on weekends. Getting all 16 people to show up to one call is very rare because everybody's working different schedules and, you know, people are in and out of town. And people just aren't available.
Yeah, there are different incentives though.
But yeah, there's, it is a different incentive. I, you know, I, I feel just in the discussion with the members that we have currently at the hall, we've been having conversations about it that, you know, some things are not going to change. I mean, their schedules are their schedules. We have lots of, lots of our firefighters are on different swing shifts. They're working the plants and the mills and stuff in town. So, you know, like, that's not going to change their, their call time. It may change for a few other people and we may get a few more showing up at nighttime. But definitely during the overnight, if people have to work in the next morning, and because a medical call comes in at 3:00 in the morning, we're not going to get 12 people showing up at 3:00 in the morning. That's just, on a structured fire, maybe, but then we need everybody. That's the, that's the difference.
And then training, do, will we maybe, like, should we get regular updates on, on how, where we're at on with this budget? I just sort of fear that, you know, there could be a day where you come and say, like, we've used it all up. So we have to decide, does our fire department get no more training this year at all? Or, you know, like, how do we gauge where, because I, you, we would never want to sort of stand down calls and actual responses. But then is some of the training a little more flexible if the money's not quite there? Or is, like, or I know the, if you have 30 members or new recruits, everybody's going to need to take certain levels of, and, and, and I guess if, yeah, these numbers did include training as well, right? Training and the actual calls of what the hours spent. Okay.
They all train. Doesn't matter whether they're good or not.
So what happens, like, will we be, maybe, a budget change quarter of the way through the year kind of thing? I mean, we just.
Yeah, no, like, I don't see that. Like I said, we, we have run, like, some of those years, we had a really, really busy training season. There are 30 people. Like, I just do not anticipate we're going to be over, over the budget this year that we have. And then we re-gauge it at budget time next fall. You know, if we run out of budget, like, we come back to council and explain. But I, I really do not see that happening at this point in time. We run the numbers over and over again through our systems, and this is the numbers we're coming up with, that we feel we're, we're going to meet it.
Okay.
Finance gives a quarterly update on your budget, so that would be a good time.
That would be your gauge.
The other thing too, to maybe try to stress council, what is the issue? If we're in that point where we're talking a significant increase in what this is costing, then we have either significantly increased our volunteers, as the mayor suggested, or we're in a call volume situation where council's got a different issue they need to deal with.
We've never been in a point where we've had to really worry about the budget for the fire department. So, and it's all based on a crystal ball. So.
For this year.
I mean, these questions are something.
And they're absolutely valid questions. And, you know, are we crystal balling some of it a little bit? You know, like, this is the first year. And we have taken numbers from kind of, you know, what some of the other, like, departments are spending. So like, we feel we're pretty close. Like, you know, there's things we can do to manage it if we get later in, in terms of, you know, how we're managing callouts and how we're managing training. You know, if we have to drop a training session, because we know, we'll, we'll know what the budget impact is for every training that we do. So we'll keep, we'll be keeping that in mind. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Somebody going to make a motion?
All do we adopt this as the limited policy?
All in favor? Carry. The next item on the list is quorum. Is that it? Yeah, quorum for the February 21st.
Meeting of the whole, yes, Madam Mayor, that is the same time as the Goring North Conference. And four of you are attending that, so we do not have quorum for the meeting of the whole in February.
Wow.
However, I think it's important that you attend the conference as well.
Are you looking for?
Just, we're, we're just suggesting that it will mean that maybe the month end one gets a little piled up.
Did you want us to move the date? Like, February is a pretty short month.
Well, I mean, you're gone most of that week. Our suggestion is that we just cancel the committee of the whole. If we have to pile up on the meetings on either side or delay something until March. We have a couple of bylaws that are coming up, but the animal control bylaw is on the schedule. Another month, probably not going to worry. I heard that one. The community standards, we were talking about shortening the timelines on cleanup orders. Again, we're still be in March or April. We're not going to be worried about that till May or June anyway. So some of that can be pushed back.
Okay. Somebody want to make the motion to council? The committee of whole? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Street and sidewalk.
So, Madam Mayor.
I pushed all my snow onto the road because nobody cleaned it up after 24 hours.
Madam Mayor, the one thing after our committee of the whole meeting last week when this was discussed, Director Schaub and I, Matt and we, of course, had quite a list of where this, where the commercial properties would be allowed to move the snow from sidewalks onto the road. And we have simplified that considerably by just saying any commercial property adjacent to a road that has not been cleaned. So that covers that whole area up to 98th and all of that area down Rainbow Boulevard into Shishaba Drive. So it's, there's, there's the odd property here and there. It would still qualify, but it would be strictly commercials on properties. The other thing we've done is we changed the restriction on dumping. And that's also in section 22. So what it now reads is no person shall deposit snow ice from their property or in any way caused to be deposited on a public street, roadway, alleyway, sidewalk, any, or any other town-owned and maintained property except, sorry, they're including as an error. Except snow and ice from the public walkways adjacent to commercial properties may be deposited onto the adjacent street if done within 24 hours of the cessation of snowfall and if the street has not yet been cleared. This allows residential properties to place the snow on the boulevards, but not on any other properties in town.
The public sidewalks, not their own sidewalk?
No, no. So if you're, if you're clearing your driveway, you can put your driveway snow on the boulevard. You're the one who maintains that boulevard, so that's your choice.
So the boulevard being the distance between the sidewalk and the actual property line in front of the house. There's a small section of property there. So if you put it on your own front lawn that you maintain for us, then that would have an issue. When you push it across the street, you're into a ditch. Then it's, that's an issue.
Council, any questions?
What question?
Yes.
In the sidewalk clearing offenses, is that, I think, is section 20? Every person who owns a property other than a residential property shall, within 24 hours of the cessation of snowfall, ensure that all snow and ice is removed from sidewalks adjoining that property. So then a sidewalks adjoining, so, so this would be sidewalks adjoining residential properties?
No, it excludes, it says either them or residential property. Residential property, residential sidewalks are the town's responsibility.
Right. So then a commercial sidewalk, if you're, if, so if you're a commercial property owner.
Like?
Like me.
Like IDA.
Yeah. Sidewalks adjoining residential properties shall be the responsibility of the town. Okay. And then it's just, it's still not complete, like, so I can, or a business owner can, as long as, basically as long as the street hasn't been cleared, can remove the snow from their sidewalk and put it on the street.
Section, section 22, Counselor Welkey says, "Snow and ice from public sidewalks adjacent to commercial properties may be deposited onto the adjacent street if done within 24 hours and if the street has not yet been cleaned."
And we're going to hold you to that 24 hours?
Wow. But what if it's still snowing, keep it while you're clearing it?
If you see that flashy white coming down the street, it's your shovel.
Does that make it clear?
Yeah.
Any other questions of council? Okay. Someone want to make the recommendation, please?
I'll move.
Counselor Welkey moves the recommendation. All in favor?
First reading, is it?
Oh, sorry, first reading for doing a bylaw. Yes.
I'll make first reading.
Okay, Counselor Welkey. Does someone want to move second reading?
I'll move.
Counselor Jessman moves second. We need unanimous consent. Can I have someone move unanimous consent? Oh, okay, all in favor. I'm trying to hurry this meeting up because.
Who made the motion to consider unanimous consent?
We haven't done it yet. Could I have a mover for unanimous consent? Counselor Lambert? All in favor? Carry. And can I have third reading for the bylaw, please?
I'll move.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. Okay. So. Can I speak to the audience?
Oh, absolutely. She'll need me to get her voice.
Because 13-3 is government negotiations, we've had to move it to in camera. So we will be discussing the request from Little Red until after in camera and making a motion. All right? Sorry about that. Thanks for some. Yeah, and the, and the motion will be made after we come out of in camera, which will be probably 8:30. And it will be on, it'll be recorded on our minutes.
Okay, awesome. I was hoping to see what my chief of health would look like.
Sorry about that. All right, 13 for the town bylaw organizational chart.
Madam Mayor, this is unchanged from your committee of the whole report. Mr. Curtis has provided a list of the changes to the organizational chart. Most of them coincide with the wage salary changes that council made in their interim budget. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions from council? That weren't answered. Nothing's changed. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion for alternative one.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Oh, Counselor Welkey, by the way. The RFD for annexation.
Director Gavin will address that, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So the RFD before you is regarding the annexation area increase to include Southeast 33109, 195, and Plan 79220391 in the current annexation application. Back in September, council passed a resolution to proceed with a separate annexation application, annexation application for these two parcels into the town. However, after administration met with Land and Property Works Tribunal back in December, the recommendation from them was to include it in the current application. Under the MGA, we can't have two annexation applications pending at the same time. So we would have to wait for the decision on the current one, which hasn't been submitted yet, before submitting this one. And then due to the intent of the resolution that was passed in September and the county's approval supporting the annexation of these parcels into the town, we did proceed with notifying the public and then asking council to just revise previous approval granted tonight. So cleaning up the resolution. So I'll take any questions?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor? There is no questions? No questions? That's the beauty of a committee of whole. The RFD for the revised terms of reference for the banners.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Director Roll will take the next two items.
So good evening, the damn mayor and council. I had come back a couple of meetings ago to, to look at nominating some new community members and realized at that time that we had kind of narrowed down the membership because we're being too specific. And we've had some really fantastic volunteers, so we felt that it would be good to open it up a bit. So the changes in the, in the terms of reference are, for example, we had a high-level chamber of commerce representative. Weren't sure exactly the benefit of having some specifically from the chamber list of boundary members. So we're just thinking that a mayor-at-large would be, would be just as significant. We talked about youth members. Originally, we had them as high-level army cadets. But we've thought there's a lot of things we'd like to see youth doing in discussion with the committee. And so we thought it would be good to have maybe high school youth, other youths who want to open that way up. We really would like to have more than one veteran. That was, it was a big benefit, having a veteran. So we will really push to have more than one, the minimum of five, because that was really important for ensuring that we had the correct conflicts and the correct insignia and that sort of thing. We seem to have quite an interest from enforcement agencies, some sheriffs, RCP, that sort of things. We thought that would be a good thing to retain because those usually work really well together. And then having members at large at no set number. So basically looking at having at least a minimum of five and then a maximum of 10. Yeah, that's it. So.
Any questions? Looks good. Like, I, I agree. High school students.
Can anybody younger, is there an age limit on for children?
We didn't put a specific age limit on. I think we're looking just at that time with the committee, we're looking at, at youth that might be doing projects that could perhaps like go further into the background of some of the, some of the veterans that were on the banners. We're providing more of a story background. So we've gone from, you know, the program that we have, it may be expanded and then becoming like a school project. So we hadn't discussed it in exact age. I think anyone would be, have the capacity to do what was required at the time.
They have the element. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please? To what?
A second, the changes.
Counselor Libron? All in favor? Carrie. The Tourism Grants.
So we've had several different applications for tourism enhancement grants. So we have two from, uh, minor hockey and one from, uh, the high-level karate club, where they respond still. Um, we've gone through our matrix and, uh, and read these pretty amounts that are shown here. I have to say with the minor hockey, just wanted to expand on that a bit, like the, um, the one U9 hockey tournament, what that involves is there's, um, the U9 was like under the ring, so they're younger hockey players, and they invite teams from, uh, Hay River, sometimes Portsmouth, Grand Prairie. When those players come in, they bring their entire family and they book the hotels for the Friday and Saturday, so it actually really fits well with the heads and beds. We usually always get a really good turnout. Um, and then for, um, minor hockey, um, I think they're pretty excited to be back in full swing. They haven't hosted that many playoffs, um, due to COVID and everything else, so this year they put their name in and never really know you're gonna get it until it almost happens right before. So they haven't allocated in their budget funds, this is the U15 I'm talking about now. They haven't allocated funds for, like, ice and that sort of thing. Um, for these U15 playoffs, they've already booked 80 hotel rooms for that weekend because of the number of teams that are coming in. And again, those teams will come with their families for the Friday and Saturday, um, so it would be well subscribed and again, we are-- Um, as far as hockey, we have, um, in the past, um, two years, we've funded the, um, the junior program that's coming through Times of the World. We have funded, we just funded another U, not sure what age group it was. So there has been a fair amount going out to hockey, but I would say they, um, they do bring, you know, lots of, lots of people into the community.
So does this coincide with the provincial basketball?
I think it does, yeah. We were just talking about that today. And then I think, um, Director Schmidt was saying that there's also a fire department, something going on there as well, too.
Big regional training program that weekend here in Austin. 20 out of 20 firefighters arriving so far, it's more than focused, though.
So it's gonna be a pretty busy weekend.
Is there a motion from counsel? Counselor Lambert?
I'll move up here to one.
All in favor? Carrie.
Thank you very much.
The Northern and Regional Economic Development Grant.
Madam Mayor, it's your Committee of the Whole. Council discussed, uh, the request from the Regional Economic Development Initiative for letter of support for their, um, application to the Northern Regional Economic Development, uh, Program Grant, uh, for the, uh, 10 business cases they're looking at for light industrial or industrial projects up here. And after that meeting, we also had a request from the, uh, high-level Major Apprenticeship Center, who was putting in an application, uh, for some signage and other directional, uh, information for the cultural park. So we did a very quick, um, email out and had no objection for council providing those because that grant was due in midnight yesterday. So the town did manage to submit their grants as well yesterday, um, and we have been assured by Alberta Economic Development that letters of support did no way jeopardize anyone's project.
That's a strange date to have a grant in.
This was a grant that was announced on the 19th of December, so we have essentially had two and a half weeks to deal with that.
Is there any questions from counsel? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Anderson? All in favor? Carrie. May the best grant win.
The old grant.
Yeah. Let me reform that, all grants. Uh, the Strategic Plan Quarterly Update.
Yes, so as promised, January 23rd is our first quarterly update, so this is for Q4 of 2022. Um, senior management team met on Monday last week, um, forgot the date, 16th, there we go. And, uh, we had a few examples, so CMR consulting did provide us with a couple of templates, and I kind of tweaked them and created a couple of others. So we have four to look at, we decided on this one. Um, added a bit of color to it, so each functional area has their own color, so this is actually, um, an Excel sheet that has 10 different tiles on there. And every single action item that is currently in the implementation plan was pulled out and put in here under whoever is accountable, so the A. We're gonna have to do a bit of tweaking on some of that, or put a comment in there about the health and safety functional area. They have Rs and Cs and Is, but no As, so that puts them on the CIO. Um, so we'll do a bit of tweaking there and changing those up. And then of course, um, any new RFDs that have come to council, uh, that have created additional work, new action items are gonna be added all the time to the implementation plan. So we have a little goal here, reporting some progress on some of the items that were due in Q4, and then some that, uh, some departments have started making progress on. So we're really looking for council feedback today on the format, um, I don't know if we'll see any changes there. The next report would be due to council, I believe we're gonna go with the first council meeting of the month, when the other reports are due, so that will be just after Easter, the first meeting in April.
Who's pulling all this information?
What do you mean?
Compiling it in.
So we have the, I, I put them all in initially, um, just to start us off, and then it's sa, it's saved on our server, and everybody can go in and do their own updates.
I actually like the, like it myself. I don't know, I see operations isn't working very very well.
Yeah, our second and third quarter is really full.
I'm gonna say nothing, it's due for operations this time around.
I, I don't know about the, go, Deputy Mayor?
No, I agree, I think this is a fantastic quarter, looks really good. I'm just wondering, as we get future reports, whether we're gonna be able to distinguish what's been done since the last one? So there's 15% now, and there's 40% next time, is it just gonna show 40 or is it gonna show 50, 55?
Probably be just 40 is how it would look, and then we'd have an annual report, because anything that reaches 100 will get removed, and then put in the annual one, but in the big plan, you would see that still. But, yeah, it would show 40, so that would be the update, and I guess we need comments.
I'm just trying to, I'm just thinking as we go forward, and once there's progress on every one, we won't necessarily be able to see what the changes been since the last one.
Yeah, that's true.
So can we add one maybe over, like, four quarters, like, four columns within that percentage status, maybe? And then add it in for each quarter?
Does it matter? What progress has been made?
Well, I just, I think it might be interesting to know, you know, there are some of these at the top that are, um, you know, we're already at, what, 75%?
The moment, that would be interesting.
Yes, like, I just think, you know, we look at that and we say, wow, 75%.
That's great, well, they skated.
But if it looks like that until 2026, where it says, you know, 2022 Q4 to 2026, well, nothing may happen on that for four years. Well, I would like to know that, and maybe Bill asked the question, saying, wow, we got off to a fantastic start, but what happened yet?
Oh, that's a good, uh, good point. Yeah, we can certainly look at that. Can you put a bar graph in, what you do? Yeah. Showing the--
Red and pink, red and pink.
You know, I don't wanna make it complicated, I don't wanna create more work for administration, but I'm just thinking, as a useful tool going forward, it's gonna be nice for us to be able to gauge, you know, how quickly things are, are being done. So that once Q3, Q4 come through for operations and you see them go, boom.
Madam Mayor, just a suggestion, but perhaps, um, putting the commencement date as part of the action item, would that work? Because if the commencement was quarter one in 2023, and in 2024, you're not seeing substantial progress, and in fourth quarter, you're not seeing substantial progress, at least it gives you the gauge on when that project started.
But I think that the timeline's already been set out, because it--
What, yes, I suppose, it does say, well, the timeline is when it's supposed to be completed, or completed at. So unless it's been completed, you would actually have that. Uh, so if you've got a Q1 2023 that's still there, at 25% in two more quarters, then something stalled in that, because that was when it was supposed to be completed.
I guess if we still got paper copies like the mayor likes, we could just have the old one and the new one, and we could just compare them side by side, but pretty tough to do on your iPad.
If, a landscape portrait might allow a little more flexibility to, similar to the actions.
You can look at it.
Give my--
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I really like the idea, I think it's the, gives a great snapshot where we're at, and I'm fine with the way it's laid, the percentages, it'll be good.
Anybody else have any suggestions? I'm fine with the way it is, because I'd be looking at, okay, 2021, we're still not finished with our multi-plan, and I'd be looking at that, saying, what the heck is going on?
Well, we can look at options. An idea landscape might be better, because we could fit in a bit more. Um, can certainly look at it, not, not--
Don't knock yourself out.
No, I'll try not to.
All right. Do you want to assist?
I did do a briefing, though it probably should have been an RFD, so more touches for that, probably accepting for information.
We have a motion to accept the quarterly strategic plan report.
I'll move to separate information.
Counselor Anderson? Maybe you don't ever have to work on it again. All in favor? Carrie. Um, to, uh, Minister Nixon.
Madam Mayor, we had an invitation from the MLA's office to meet with Minister Nixon on February 7th, uh, at, uh, at 5:00 PM, and, uh, we asked if there's anything else we could accommodate, and they mentioned dinner, so I said we'd agree with council, would probably be more than willing to do that. That probably gives you a little more time with him than normally would as well. Um, so they're, just, what we're looking for is just to, uh, uh, agree to that date, and we'll do that meeting sent, and then just let us know if there's any issues specifically, and we'll put a briefing note together for Minister Nixon.
So are we going to discuss the multi-purpose evacuation center, or the mental health, or the seniors, or--
Well, seniors--
McKenzie houses?
McKenzie House, I think is, is an issue. I think the, um, uh, the requisition, the fact that we're sitting with an empty lodge because of provincial decisions, you have any requisition on it, I think that this is the gentleman you would want--
Yeah, I know. But does he wanna know about our multi-purpose center?
If council wants to talk to him, then he can set that up.
Okay. All right.
If anything else arises, you can let us know, but I'll put a briefing note together and give you a lot of information on it.
Okay.
But apparently, the abstract and strong news suggested that perhaps, the real housing--
Uh, Golden Rain Society.
Senior Center?
Yeah, one of them to host the meal.
To host the meal?
Yeah.
They'll tell you pounds then?
Or the Boreal housing.
Boreal housing, maybe?
We'll reach out.
All right.
We'll, we'll have a briefing note specifically what we want to be.
Well, what we wanna talk about, yeah. All right. So can we have acceptance on this? Someone move to accept this for counsel? It is a council night, so we will, it's just, it's fine. It's-- Isn't it?
Yeah, you're not participating in that one, it's the, so actually, it's Tuesday. You have a two-week break, and you're gonna have to attend, and you're gonna bring in--
Okay, so does someone wanna make that motion? Let me meet with Minister Nixon? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carrie. Maybe we could bring the Golden Rain Society here.
Yeah, we've got some issues, we're gonna ask if they have something I'd like to discuss, we're gonna reach out on that, too.
14.1, the Humane Society.
Uh, actually, Madam Mayor, you have 13.11.
Oh, yeah, down here. 13.11, try counsel.
Uh, the town of Rainbow Lakes, this, uh, next week might be just a little hard for any of us to be organized for, uh, and it's suggested that we look at February the 1st or February the 8th, so that would be Wednesday, two weeks from now, or three weeks. Our personal preference is administration, because some work needs to be done prior to that, as February 8th would work better for us. But we are open to council's calendar.
In Rainbow Lake?
Nope, here.
Oh, oh, okay.
Rainbow Lakes just trying, they're trying to move around their council schedule more.
Counsel, do you have a problem with the 8?
No, but the last one was here.
We're holding out on here. Yeah, we normally--
I thought, I thought the, the plan, I mean, I'm all for it being here, but I thought the plan was to circulate them around.
In the summer months, maybe?
The, the terms of reference state, the meetings will be held now.
Terms of reference, they're always to be here. The one meeting that was held in recruit was a long time for them to show off their degree.
At our request.
At their request.
No, it was mine.
Is it?
Yeah.
We still bought separate, though.
Why couldn't it, yeah, because it was there.
All right, so, um, everybody's good with the 8, could I have a motion? Counselor Lambert, to accept the 8. All in favor? Carrie. Now to the Humane Society.
Madam Mayor, in discussion with Ms. Beeden, uh, we felt that some of the organizations that provide grants, or that we provide grants to and do have to give us financial data, that we list them as a separate issue, that council can accept that information, uh, rather than bury, than, rather than it getting buried in the general correspondence, that we actually put in council, or in correspondence for action, so the council has a chance to actually address it individually.
Does anybody have any, uh, things to say? Good morning.
Only if you accept it for information.
Okay. Anybody have any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Carrie. So the correspondence for information, could I have someone move? If there's no-- Counselor Jessman moves information for information. All in favor? Carrie. Could I have a motion to move us in camera? Oh. This ends our public portion of our meeting. Thank you for attending. What? Okay, and Deputy Mayor moves to write a letter. All in favor? Carrie. Can I have someone move to adjourn? Counselor Jessman? He's been trying to adjourn since we got here at 7:00. All in favor? Carrie.